Agency for Community Development. Ms. Baylor, would you show the three of us here, please? And we will open up oral communications solely for the closed item session. Hearing none, we will close. We will recess. What's the name of that room over there? The Founder's Room is to the Founder's Room. Okay. You got anything?
No, that's good.
I didn't think so.
Madam Clerk, would you please call Rol?
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Doe?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. Okay, we'll have the invocation by Keith Jones, Public Works Director, and the pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Nguyen.
Dear Lord, we ask for your presence in these proceedings. May your hand guide the decisions made here this evening for the benefit of all. Amen.
Amen. Please face our flag and say the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we had a closed-session item listed, however, we held no closed session this evening. Let's see, next is oral communications for the council and agency. I don't see any cards. Anyone here that would like to speak to council? Okay, seeing none, I'll close oral communications. Any member comments? If not, we'll go to number five, written communications.
We have a card walking the door right there.
Did you want to address the council? We just, we have oral communications, we just closed it, but did you want to address the council?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. Okay, written communications.
Mr. Mayor, 5A is a request from Senator Lou Correa that the city cosponsor the Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month Celebration event scheduled for Thursday, May 5, 2011, at the Community Meeting Center.
Okay, anyone want to consider the written communication?
Are we, is an item to be voted on?
Yes.
Oh, I move to approve this request.
Oh, second.
Okay, motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, I'll recess the council and we'll go to the agency.
Okay, at this time, we'll open up the agency. Will you please call Rol's?
Member Dalton?
Here.
Member Doe?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Nguyen?
Here.
Chair Broadwater?
Here. Okay, we, at this time, we had two, we had a closed-session item and we have nothing to report on that at this time. We have no consent items and we have no public hearing. Let's go to item six, items for consideration.
Mr. Chairman, you actually have a couple of items that are going to be held jointly with the city council. Those are items 9A and 9B. The first item is to consider a resolution approving a purchase-and-sale agreement between the agency and the city for property located on Grove Street. And Greg Brown is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mayor Dalton, City Council, Chairman Broadwater, members of the agency. Before you tonight is a request that the city council and the agency adopt concurrent resolutions approving a purchase-and-sale agreement between the city and the agency for community development for the transfer of real property located at 12892 through 12942 Grove Street to the agency for community development for $2.3 million. City is authorized to convey its real property to the agency pursuant to Section 3322-0 of the Community Redevelopment Law. It's intended that this property be subsequently developed with residential housing. That includes an affordable housing component. The subject property has already been entitled for residential mixed-use development. Transfer of the property from the city to the agency was previously provided for pursuant to the granting of land use entitlements. The proposed sales price is considered to be within the range of fair market value as determined by an appraisal, which you have with you this evening. The agency appraiser has further confirmed that the $2.3 million value is within the range of fair market value for affordable housing development. Funds for this transaction will come from the redevelopment housing set-aside fund. Based on the information presented above, staff recommends that, as the city council, adopt the attached city council resolution approving the attached purchase-and-sale agreement with the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development and authorize the mayor to execute the purchase-and-sale agreement and pertinent documents on behalf of the city and authorize the city manager and finance director to implement the agreement and to make minor modifications as needed. And as the agency for community development, adopt the attached agency resolution approving the attached purchase-and-sale agreement with the city of Garden Grove. Appropriate $2.3 million from the redevelopment housing set-aside fund. Authorize the agency chair to execute the purchase-and-sale agreement and pertinent documents on behalf of the agency. Authorize the agency director and finance director to implement the agreement and make minor modifications to the documents as needed. And staff is available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Did you reconvene the city, I mean?
I'm sorry, yes, I did reconvene the council. If you didn't hear it, I did, I'll do it again, but yeah. So we have the council and the agency open.
Okay. Can these be voted on simultaneously?
Oh, one at a time. So we do council action first and then an agency action.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. 9A at the council agenda number, is that correct?
Yes. So if there's no questions or any-
Any questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Have motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, at this time, we'll-
No, I'm sorry, now we need a motion for the agency to adopt the agency resolution.
Move the item.
Second.
This wouldn't let me go there, would you? Call for the vote.
I don't know where you're going.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, matters from agency members?
Don't we have to do 9B?
One more.
One more.
6B.
All right, I wanted to know if they could be simultaneously, but I didn't. Okay, let's go.
No, these are, these are definitely different items. 6B, 6B. 6B is a, is a joint action, again, with the city council, but this is a cooperation agreement between the agency and the city, and it addresses two very important issues. One is a, an existing agency loan with the city in the amount of $8.6 million that needs to be memorialized, as well as provide a method of repayment. That's the first item within the cooperation agreement. The second item within the cooperation agreement refers to a bond issue that the city issued in 2001, I believe, and the agency has been making the debt service on that and has identified it as a debt in its statement of indebtedness with the county and the state. However, again, they, there's, that has not been memorialized, so this item will attempt to do that. And without stealing any more thunder, Mr. Blodgett will give you a little bit more detail about this action.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mayor Dalton, City Council, Mr. Chair, members of the agency. The purpose of this report is for the city to consider a cooperation agreement between the agency and the city. The agency and city have entered into previous agreements of indebtedness, the city and agency, including the 2002 COP Certificate of Participation for $21 million. In addition, the city's also made loans to the agency in a series of loans totaling $8.6 million, which include a loan for $4.6 million in 1984, and a loan of $1.9 million in 2004, and a loan of $846,000 in 2005, and also a loan of $1.2 million in 2007. These proceeds were used for advanced, advanced to extend the agency for capital projects. The agency's auditor recently found and recommended that the agency's debt owed to the city have a cooperation agreement, which we have drafted and is attached. Agency repayment for the loan will be made through available agency funds and/or transfer of agency assets, including land held for resale. The financial impact of this agreement, the city will receive $21.474,795 million and receive payments of $8.6 million of city loans to the agency plus interest. It's recommended at this time that the city council approve the attached cooperation agreement and adopt a resolution of the city council authorizing and approving a cooperation agreement between the agency and city, making certain determinations and approvals in connection therewithin, and authorize officers and hereby authorize direct to make all necessary and/or convenient to implement the agreement. And two, that the agency approve the attached cooperation agreement between the city and the agency and adopt a resolution authorizing, approving cooperation agreement of the agency and city making certain determinations and approvals in connection therewithin and authorizing the city officers to direct and make all necessary or convenience to implement this cooperation agreement. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, here, that's for 9B, correct?
Right, so again, we'll need a council action first and then an agency action.
Hearing, no questions for staff, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Have motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, anybody entertaining, any questions for staff?
No.
Hearing none, we'll-
Move the item.
Take a position on the issue. We got a-
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, is there any matters from agency members? Hearing none, we will adjourn until?
Twenty-second.
Okay, since the council is still in session, we'll go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 6A through 6E be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member.
Move the items.
Second.
Have motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
A public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, your public hearing tonight is to consider an amendment to PUD number 14402, adding ambulance service to permitted uses at corner of Knott and Patterson. Susan Emery is rushing in here to give you a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The request you are considering this evening is a proposal to amend PUD 14402 to add ambulance service as a permitted use, subject to a CUP, to operate a new, almost 4, 5,000 square-foot ambulance service business, Americare Mediservices at 11458 Knott Street. This is located in a industrial zone at Knott and Patterson Street. It's a newer industrial development. This would take a fair amount of space there that's vacant. Staff has evaluated it as a compatible use to the other uses that are in that PUD and in the surrounding neighborhood. To describe a little bit for you the services provided, it's essentially a medical transportation service. Although it's an ambulance-type service, it won't be a point of, of care where the ambulances that are there will be called out with sirens and lights to respond to emergency services. It's primarily a, what they call a point A to point B transportation for patients. So if you're familiar with hospital patients that are transported to convalescent care centers, these ambulances will be dispatched to hospitals and then transport patients from place to place. So it shouldn't be disruptive or an impact to the surrounding industrial uses or to the residential neighborhoods that are near there in terms of noise or lights or anything like that. It is a 24-hour-day operation. There is a condition that allows, under the CUP, the police chief to reduce hours of operation if there's a problem. If you look at the floor plan, it's primarily office, executive office space, a lot of medical storage space, rest area for the employees, and there's also a bay for the ambulances as they're prepared before they go out. So staff recommends that the city council hold a public hearing for consideration of amendment number A158-11, amending the PUD 14402 to add ambulance service as a conditionally permitted use, and introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance. And I'll read the title of that for you. An ordinance of the city council of the city Garden Grove amending, I'm sorry, approving amendment number A158-11, an amendment to the PUD 144-02, zone to add ambulance service as a permitted use, subject to conditional use permit approval. And I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Hearing none, at this time, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Move the issue.
Second.
Have a motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, 8A appointments.
This is the time to reappoint the commissions, and you have several commissions to fill this evening. And if you don't mind reading the first part of the script there.
Agenda item 8A is appointment of city commissioners. Pursuant to state law, the mayor appoints commissioners subject to city council approval. I've prepared a list of commission appointments for consideration by the city council. I've also been requested by Mayor Protam, Steve Jones, to leave one position on the traffic commission open, and I will do that. My appointments to the commissioner is follows.
The first commission that we'd like to fill is the Administrative Board of Appeals, and you have five candidates for that.
Okay, the candidates, the recommendations or nominations are Stan Beitler, Paul Ernst, Laktan Nguyen, Chona Preston, and Deon Tran.
Motion to approve those members.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
The second commission is the Main Street Commission, and you have seven members to appoint there.
My nominations are Doug Coleman, Steve Delott, Hu Sheng, Farah Mond, Jeremy Harris, Audrey Picor, and Rebecca Weimer, with one vacancy at this time.
I move to approve.
Second.
Have motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
The third commission is the Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation Commission, and you have seven members to fill.
Okay, my nominations are Lilian Foster, Lucille Freer, Allison Hanna, Jerry Kill, Gustavo Lopez, James Pope, and Toby Rubin.
I move to approve.
Second.
Have motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
The fourth commission is the Parks, Recreation, and Arts Commission, and there's seven members to appoint.
Okay, my nominations are Gigi Horowitz, Gary Lazinbi, Dorothy Malcolm, Robin Macario, Darren Picorillo, Marilyn Tortolano, and Jack Wallen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
The next commission is the Sanitary District Advisory Board, and there's five members to appoint.
Okay, my nominations are Leonard Beg, Nicholas Constantino, Charles Mitchell, Nguyen Nguyen, and Harry Pierce.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, now we have the Planning Commission. So I think I'll go ahead with my nominations. Not, I'll exclude one until we handle after that, correct?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and read the statement?
No, no, I think we're there at the nomination.
No, I think we, I nominate, okay, for Planning Commission, I nominate Chris Beard, George Brightigum, Fat Buie, Jennifer Cabral, Dennis Ellsworth, and Joseph Pack.
I move to approve.
Second.
Have motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, and for Traffic, I have-
Now, do you want to finish Planning Commission?
You want to go to the Planning Commission?
I think we want to finish the Planning Commission. I think there's one opening still.
There is.
Is there not?
Okay, the city council will need to address the appointment of Joseph Dovin to the Planning Commission.
I, I'm declaring a conflict in this matter, and I will not be participating because Mr. Dovin is my husband.
Perfect, that's fine.
Okay, is there any discussion or may I have a motion to approve the applicant?
I approve.
Dovin, I'm sorry.
Second.
Have motion, second, call for the vote. Okay, with regard to the remaining vacancy on the Traffic Commission, Mayor Protam Jones had requested that one position be held open.
Before we do that, Mr. Mayor, let's go ahead and nominate the four for the Traffic Commission.
I'm sorry, okay, I got confused when we went back to the planning.
Yeah.
Okay, for Traffic, my nominations are Nolan Alejandro, Randy Armgast, Catherine Feather, and John Rodriguez.
Move to approve.
Have motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, now I'll go over that a little bit again. With regard to the remaining vacancy on the Traffic Commission, Mayor Protam Jones had requested that one position be held open. Since I have a personal conflict of interest, as Robert Dalton is my son, I will turn the meeting over to Mayor Protam Jones and will not participate in this matter.
Okay, thank you. For the remaining seat on the Traffic Commission, I would like to nominate Robert Dalton.
Second.
Go for a vote. Oh, Steve, you're supposed to say that.
How's it going?
Motion received, four yes votes.
Thank you. Now, if the mayor will return, I think we'll go to council appointments, right?
Right.
Okay, the next item is appointments of city council representatives to outside organizations.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that unless a council member has any comments or other concerns about the existing makeup of these committees, that the council make a motion to approve the members as listed.
I make a motion to approve the members as listed.
Second.
Okay, have motion, second, call for the vote.
Second, but real quick for discussion, what about the SCAG thing?
I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna do that next.
Oh, I see, okay, gotcha.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, those were the established ones that we've had. Okay, are there any nominations for the Southern California Association of Governments General Assembly? I will nominate Mayor Protam Jones.
Second.
Have motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
What else do we have? What was the other?
There was also one that Keith Jones was on, or is on.
Well, we can come back if, because Keith may never leave.
Yeah.
So, we'll wait till he leaves.
Okay, we're done with those? Any other questions? Okay, we have 9C.
9C is an agreement with CJ Concrete for On-Call Concrete Construction Services, and Keith Jones here to give a staff report on this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the purpose of this contract is for on-call services for concrete repairs, such as for damaged curb and gutters and sidewalks, and also to ensure proper storm drainage and water nuisance drainage. We had total of five bidders, and it was determined that CJ Construction was the lowest responsible bidder. And they have a past history with the city of Garden Grove and have found no discrepancies in their customer service. The financial for this is a five-year contract, $600,000 for the first year, and that's, that's a intentional amount we intend to spend, but it could also be we don't spend anything because this is on-call service. So depending on how we use them, we'll determine how much, but we won't go over $600,000 the first year, and the subsequent four years remaining, if we renew on an annual basis, it'd be $400,000 a year. And the funds that'll pay for this are traffic congestion relief funds. There are already $300,000 allocated for this year, and we need an additional $300,000 allocated in the fiscal year 2010-11 budget, and the funds are available for that. So it's recommended the city council award the contract for a cost option B to the lowest qualified bidder, CJ Concrete Construction Incorporated, for the concrete repair services in amount not to exceed $600,000 for the first year, with four one-year options to renew at $400,000 per year. Authorize the city manager to execute the agreements on behalf of the city and authorize the finance director to allocate $300,000 to the fiscal year 2010-11 budget. At completion and report, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Move the issue.
Second.
Have a motion, second, call for the vote.
Councilwoman Broadwater? It didn't take it. Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you. There's, that's it on our agenda, so Mr. Broadwater, do you have anything?
No. Have a good time for the next two weeks. See you then.
Ms. Nguyen?
Oh, yes. Mayor, you reminded me of St. Patrick's Day, so we won't be here next week, and I wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day. And I'm sure our rec. department has a lot of activities for St. Patrick's Day. Also, I want to remind everyone to buy in Garden Grove and help out our businesses, like always, and have a good rest of the month.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Just a quick comment, just to say that, you know, in the last few years, as all cities have been grappling with budget issues and, you know, going through a really bad economic timeframe, I would say the city of Garden Grove has done exceptionally well at, you know, getting out ahead of that and making necessary adjustments, but not going too far and being overkill on these sort of things. The biggest wild card we've had has been the fact that the state of California's budget is so far upside down, and that cities are kind of an easy target from the state to come try and steal money out of our pockets. So a big thing that we've been working with a lot lately is the state's attempt to abolish redevelopment agencies, which obviously is a huge sort of economic engine for the city of Garden Grove that we hope will not go away. But in light of all that, you know, we're, we're fighting the good fight on behalf of the future Garden Grove to preserve our interests in that regard and keep the state out of our pockets and off our backs and go make the necessary cuts they need to do and, and leave us alone, so.
Thank you, Mr. Doe. Okay, I'd like to, well, yes, thank you for mentioning St. Patrick's Day. I do have my shamrock tie on here early, and I just want to show you how many languages I know. Erin Gobrah, which means Ireland forever. Anyway, I also want to-
Does that mean you're giving up your U.S. citizenship?
Actually, that's, since you ask, if you go in my office at City Hall, I have dual citizenship. I have Irish citizenship and American, United States citizenship. I want to adjourn the meeting in honor of Emma Jo, or Jo Ballard, the wife of the first chief of police in Garden Grove, Reese Ballard. They moved here in 1957 when he was offered the job for chief of police. In fact, I've seen the telegram because Jo used to have it in her house, and when he got the job, they offered him $500 a month. And he came down here from North Sacramento and was the first chief and later councilman and mayor. Jo was one of the original Garden Grove greeters for the Chamber of Commerce, attending many city events and ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings. She was president of the women's division of the Chamber, 1963 and 64. Loved to play cards and go to the movies. Unfortunately, she died a couple days ago, so we weren't really able to get enough information that I think she really deserves. If you knew her, she loved the city, she loved the police department, of course. I knew her for many years. She was 90 years old, and she moved up to Ronard Park, and quite frankly, she moved up there to be with her sister because she had cancer and knew she didn't have very long to live. The services actually are going to be tomorrow up in Northern California in Ronard Park, but she will, her remains will be brought down to Westminster Memorial Park, and she will be buried next to her husband Reese. But anybody that knew her, she was, she was almost like a mom to you. Just, just a wonderful, wonderful person, and Garden Grove suffered a great loss. I'll adjourn the meeting until Tuesday, March 22, at 5:30 PM in the council chambers. Thank you.